Good afternoon to all of you. Before we start our public hearing, I wanted to apologize to all of you for the sudden change of schedule that happened today. And we apologize for that. This public hearing was supposed to be held at 10 o'clock this morning, but due to our session, we have to move it to 1:00. But I guess we failed to notify you in advance. So we apologize for that. This afternoon, public hearing is on Bill number 11-163, a bill for an act to amend Title VII of the Yap State Code, Yap State Elections by enacting a new section, 201, and renumbering sections 201 through section 204 as section 202 through 205, respectively, to create board of elections by amending section 301, 302, 601 through 606, 701, 704, 801, 803, 806, 818, and 1001 through 1005 concerning officials, ballots, and procedures for Yap State Elections and for other purposes. This bill was introduced by the good chairman, Senator Jean-Michel from the RED Committee. With us this afternoon as principal witnesses, we have the Attorney General, Acting Governor, Election Commissioner, Vice Speaker, Floor Leader, Director, Youth and Civic Affairs, and Jean-Yann from Youth Service, Isan from the Media and Protocol, Representative from the Council of Pilung, and staff from the Election Office and our legal council. At this time, I will turn the floor to the proponent of the bill to run us through the rationale behind the bill, and we can have comments and question after that. Thank you, Chairman.
Kumbwar, Chairman of Bhamukh. As we can see, the bill is fairly long, and there's lots of changes. So I'll just give you, in my own words, the layman's version of the proposed changes and also the context behind why I thought this was necessary. So in the past, we've seen that sometimes there have been elections where the election is not certified until maybe a month later because of things like delay in ships bringing in the boxes and things like this. And also, what do you call that? So there were a couple of other things, and I had had talks with the late Commissioner, who were before about this and changes that she wanted done with the office and how it does business. And so, and she should know, she was the one there for so many years. And so when I came on board, this was something that I had in the backburner and I was deliberating on, and to see a way forward on this. And so with our late governor, the governor who just passed recently, I had lunch with him and I talked to him about this. And there were four things that I wanted to bring to his attention regarding the Election Office. One is that I wanted the Election Office, and I took it to him, of course, because it's a courtesy. This is his branch of the government. We can't do the law here, but still it's his branch. So it was respectful and courteous to tell him about it ahead of time before I tried to do any changes, figure he's okay. So one of the things that I proposed to him is that the Election Office also becomes like the office of the editor or the office of the Attorney General. What it has independence, or independence as far as government is concerned, like the AG here, the governor can just remove him on a whim. He has to have consent from the legislature to remove. He's the only cabinet who has that. So he has some independence. If the governor has done wrong, he can prosecute the governor, prosecute the governor without fear of reprisal. Also, our editor, the way it's set up, is to be independent. So if there's malfeasance, wrongdoing with state farms or what have you, they can investigate those. And I wanted the Election Office to have that kind of San Croissant clarity where nobody is interfering with them. Political influence is not part of that, right? And as it currently sits with DYNC A, there might be influence, like the last election we had on the political status review, because maybe some of us wanted that to happen. We don't want to influence that vote, having him do the count, and there's pressure to come out with some numbers, certify some numbers. So that we have this body, because at points in the past, we had people sue the government for election issues. We've had that maybe three legislatures, three votes ago at the state level, I think. So I wanted them to be out of, in the clear, always seen as the last word and everything. If there's any issues when they certify, that should be as good as gold. So that was the idea, to keep them independent. And so with that, if you remove them from under a department, I don't want to just give him the carte blanche to do whatever he wanted. He still needs some kind of oversight. And so that was the idea behind the other part that is on this bill, having a board of members, election board of three people. This election board would be people that are appointed by the governor, the sitting governor, and through advice and consent confirmed by the legislature with all the due diligence that we do regarding background checks and all of those. I was deliberating whether to have the two councils, the Council of Tumwal and Pilung, put in members, but I thought it might get into political leanings if there's a specific candidate or something. It can't bear, bring in undue influence. So it just became three board members from the governor, and we confirm it here. And those three board members would serve a term of eight years. That's the longest, I think, as far as board membership goes, because I wanted them to at least be able to have participated in one or two elections, to have that kind of institutional knowledge to see what needs to be corrected or what eyes need to be dotted, what t's need to be crossed moving forward. That was my thinking behind the election board. Because right now, we have, we call in this enabling legislation, we have people here, we call an election board. But they're not, that's not really a board. They're really more like poll workers. They work at the ballot, the polling places, but we call them an election board. But we would like to have a true board. I feel that if we want them to have independence, at least give him a governing board where they approve budgets. I don't know if that's not clear in the bill, but they approve his budget and they see these kinds of things before the budget is submitted to EBR C for them to consider and deliberate on. So that's one, the independence and having the board membership. Two other things that I wanted, that I thought was necessary as we move forward and technology and things advance, is I wanted the language in here to include the language on electronic voting, electronic voting. So that I've been working with some private sector people to hopefully come up with an app, software for the state so that we can move towards that area. Because as it is, the state of Yap is connected via Starlink or some other means all the way to Sutumbul. So this idea of waiting for ships with ballot boxes could become obsolete. We're not in the stone age, Flintstone days. We're hopefully moving into the future. So having the language in here of electronic voting as part of voting. I hope that the work is there doing that. It seems to be close to fruition. It's getting just accredited by three different entities, certified is what I was told when he, Lou, presented that stuff to us. But I think he was also in contact with you, Commissioner, regarding trying to come up with an app or a software for the state to use with that. An apology to Government Health and Welfare Committee, that's just me going out on a limb without any input from you guys to try to get some improvement for the state, some things I thought was sorely needed. And the final aspect of this, what I'm trying to propose here, I don't know if it's in this current bill as it, the way it is, is early voting. My thinking was, as soon as the ballot becomes official, then people can vote at their leisure all the way to election day so that it can get higher turnout instead of, election day is the only day to vote. I've seen earlier voting in the United States. And if you get that done here, then you'll have higher turnout instead of waiting for election day, and maybe it's raining or you have an emergency and your vote is not heard, your voice is not heard. So those were the four things that really I wanted to adjust with what currently is the Yap State Enabling Legislation for Elections and Election Office. So, Kumbwar, Chairman.
Kumbwar, Chairman of Bhamukh, for your comments and statement and the idea behind the bill. Now, with the online voting or electronic voting, the legislature have seen a draft of that product. It has been presented to this body, and we were amazed of what technology can do. I think at this stage, it's going through varying and gets certified. And I would like to thank the Election Commissioner and the staff of the office for working closely with our private sector for developing the software. The early voting, which you also mentioned, is something that the state has been facing during every election. The last election was delayed for, I believe, three weeks for the result to be certified because of the timing of ballot box coming in from outside of the state. So I think, and people are eager to hear the winner and the loser of every voting cycle. So to delay that, it's kind of give us question on the legitimacy of the election. So we're trying to address that. And I think that's why the chairman wanted this particular language to be included in the bill also. Any comments from the Commissioner? For our information, the Commissioner submit his opinion in writing to the legislature. And I don't have to go through it. We will share that copy with all the witnesses here who are here today for information. Anybody wanted to say anything regarding the, especially the board member? The floor is open. Kumbwar, Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My comments were submitted, my written comments were submitted on October 6, and received by the legislature on the same day. And I think the Attorney General is a recipient, and I think he did receive a copy and also the acting governor of the state. I don't have a whole lot to add to the comments that I had submitted. It's just that this afternoon, for your information, I'm having a little problem with internet. It's kind of slow. But this afternoon, I wanted to do a little bit more research to see if I could add a little bit more to what is already in the content of the letter. And so I went through this site, purported to be an independent review group. And one of the things that is mentioned there is the election management body. It stressed what the chairman of our ED was saying about the need to have an independent election body impartial to the influence, to the changes of the political climate. So that is something that is pretty much needed so there is no undue influence of one political party. We don't have a political party here on the island. But you know, where one person or a group of people influence the outcome of an election. What they recommend is to have an independent body who will make decisions according to the law and have no connection with politics. So that is that. I would like to leave it at that. And if you have any particular questions about my comments, then I'm happy to see if I can clarify. With me this afternoon is our longtime election office worker. She knows a lot more than I. I asked her to come. I didn't put words in her mouth. I told her to come, and she is free to state her opinion and what she has experienced these past maybe eight years. So with the permission of the committee and the proponent of the bill, if she has anything to say, I would like for her to come and offer whatever she wants to say. Thank you.
Kumbwar, Commissioner. Staff of the Commissioner, do you have anything to address this body at this time? Or you don't have anything? Okay, you can actually all move forward. If you have anything, please come to the table. Anybody? Go ahead, Vice Speaker. The floor is yours.
Kumbwar, Chairman. I don't know if this has been a little too by the election commissioner, and I have not, I kind of glanced over his comment. But the thing that I can think of at the moment about the board is the composition of the board. And I'm sure they're going to come here and we're going to screen that. But the number itself is the concern that I have because, you know, I'm just, you know, all being only three because two is the majority. And two, you know, it can be, it's easy for something to pop up. Then we're trying to make sure that this is an independent and free of any political influence. Now, I'm just wondering if it would make, would be, make that difficult if we have a little, few more to make it five. So that's just the concern that I have of the board, the composition of. But that's just something, just my gut feeling tells me. It's, I don't have any basis to know the difference. Kumbwar, so.
Kumbwar, Vice Speaker. And I will have the good chairman to respond to your comments. And we have discussed that earlier. Chairman.
Kumbwar, Chairman of Bhamukh. Something about what you said earlier about if the results come in certified earlier, it helps people who are interested in the election. That's not only the case, it's also the candidates themselves. I imagine we were like, you know, one of the last few races between the government for the gubernatorial chair was so tight, it was only a couple of hundred votes, and then it got stuck for about a month. I imagine those people couldn't sleep well waiting for the results to come in and wondering when. I could have campaigned here or done this, said that. So yeah, it's a bit of a very uncomfortable situation for a lot of people. That one, the one regarding the three versus five, there's really no reason why we couldn't do that, adjust the bill. That's what we have the public hearing for. And the idea that these people could be influenced, have undue influence on the Commissioner is why we want them to have a longer period so that they outlive, not outlive breathing, but the life of the governor who appointed them. They'll be out and they'll still continue as a board, right? So, but yeah, we, five, there's no reason why we couldn't adjust that number. Kumbwar.
Kumbwar, does that address your concern? I personally, when I look at the bill, I wanted to have the board to remain as it is, three, with a couple of factors in mind. We don't have that luxury of number of human resource on hand. We don't have that. And we have seen with some of the boards that has been appointed by the governor and consented by the legislature that when they set up meetings, it's hard for them to conduct their meeting due to the quorum, that it's not there. So if we increase the number, we're going to be hampering the operation of the Election Office because of that, where they encounter that situation. They don't have the quorum because of the business of all the people that we have appointed to be boards, to be on the board. So I think three is something that we can work with at the moment. But there's always room for improvement. The other reason that we wanted to also entertain the board to be part of the Election Office is to enable the office to have other resources on hand. The office is now operating with one staff and one commissioner. Whenever there's an upcoming election, they can track certain numbers of people to do certain tasks, most especially the outer island person that goes out there. So if we amend the law and have three board members to give you a recommendation, advice, and I think it will help improve the work environment within the office. That's just my opinion on these particular measures. Anything from the acting governor or the legal councils from the executive and the legislature? The floor is still open. Go ahead, acting governor.
Thank you, Chairman of Bhamukh. I'm not the expert here, but I have the AG next to me and the director of DYNC A and the Election Commissioner. I'm still not very sure on how the structure of this body works given some other parts of the law. I don't know if other parts of the Yap State Code need to be looked at in reference to the Department of DYNC A being, having a role in the election process. It might not be very clear at the moment. I'm just wondering if any of you experts can touch upon that.
The floor is yours, Chairman.
Kumbwar, Chairman of Bhamukh. I did ask, I'll see to ensure that the naval legislation has language regarding the use of media and use of public safety, police and media, because it's a necessary part of elections. So that should be in here. It's not. That's why you have a public hearing, and you will amend and put that in there afterwards.
Kumbwar, Chairman. Does that clear your question and concern? Clarify? Any AG, you have anything? Go ahead.
Chairman, thank you. Thank you, Saint Thomas Phil, for this proposal. I think we can all agree that we want the Elections Office to be independent as possible, transparent as possible in order for the people to have confidence in the process that will be overseen. The proposal by Saint Thomas Phil is, you know, nothing new to other jurisdictions also from what I've seen. It seems to be something that's implemented across other jurisdictions, not to show about other states. But I think something we need to look at directly, and this goes into acting governor's comments about the roles of DYNC. Title III, Section 126 indicates that the, that department administers elections. The language of that is not too clear as to how that is carried out by that department. Most from what I can perhaps understand, perhaps back in those days, there wasn't an Elections Office, and hence why it had to be overseen by that department. It's just we need to outline how does these roles, do these roles overlap? Or would this bill mean that that language would be taken out of Title III, Section 126? Just to avoid any ambiguity at all and a clear line of independence. But that should not negate the fact of how the media plays a pivotal role in the elections process. So I think, I do feel that there is a need for that department to be somewhat involved, but also outlining the importance of the office's independence. The other concern that I just, I had in my thoughts was the, with regards to independence, what we're trying to prevent is any political influence. I'm wondering how does that, how is that, how is that pathway clear if the governor is the person appointing the board? So I'm hoping that there's something we can iron out there to just prevent any ambiguity or perceived bias that may be weighing in favor of the governor appointing the board and legislation also. I believe there were some comments raised concerns by the commissioner. I do feel that we might need to pay attention to that also. But other than that, I do believe that this is one step ahead into ensuring a full independent office and the people's confidence in the way we carry out this process. Thank you.
Kumbwar, AG, want to respond to that? Go ahead, Chairman. Go, go ahead, Chairman.
I understand, uh, because, um, and if you look at it, uh, Commissioner Rikin was also appointed by a governor. So how far back do we go to ensure that we're at blank slate, everything is unbiased? We have to start somewhere. And hopefully the process of he appoints, we confirm, helps to alleviate that worry of political influence. As I speak, I'm aware that, um, our sister state of Tuk has had some interesting, uh, issues with a commission, uh, an election board, election boards, and what's happened there. So hoping something like this with a commissioner and an election board that's nominated and confirmed, we don't get to that kind of situation. But of course. Right. Kamwar, Mr. Chairman.
Kamwar, Chairman Mafal. In regards to your comments regarding the role of, uh, the Department of Youth, uh, Youth and Civic Affairs, in the past, the department do conduct statewide election, they're responsible for it. But I think along the line, uh, the state create an election office and the governor appoint, select and appoint and consent by the legislature, and they fail to go back and look at the, the existing law on how they can make amendments. Because I, just recently, the, the officials knew in the past, Youth and Civic Affairs, conduct state election. So we're moving ahead and we're not looking back to see what we can do to fix, what needs to be fixed before we take a, a big leap. So I, I think that's where you are today, based on your comments. Go ahead, Elsie.
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, historically, the, uh, D Y N C has been the office, uh, primarily because of the civic affairs part of their department. I think recently we had, uh, we created the position of election commissioner just for this very reason, to keep it independent from any influence. I, I think the committee can take the comments offered by, uh, by the election commissioner. I've gone through them and they make sense. Some of it, the committee needs to sit down and review, um, in accordance to this. There is some draft bills, uh, amending title III regarding, uh, D Y N C A, taking out elections entirely from their role and keeping it as them offering assistance, when the election commissioner needs, especially for public information purposes. Of course, we do not put it in, uh, in the law that the Attorney General's Office offers security, but we kind of take for granted that, that's, uh, that's part of the election process. We may include language, um, in this draft if the committee deems to move forward with the current, um, bill.
Kamwar, Legal Counsel. Anybody? Go ahead, Kam.
Thank you, Chairman. The practice now is that the, the public schools are used during elections. They, they make the, the, a room in there available for, for the election people to, to use. The Department of Public Works help in taking the boxes out and bringing them back in at no cost to the election office. This is a, uh, a state function. And, uh, the, I think the, the understanding is that it does not make sense to take money from one pocket and transfer it to the other pocket. So there, there is no, there's no charge when the, there's no charge for freight when the election boxes go on the, on the ship to the outer islands and back. Same thing with the Department of Education, they don't charge us for use of electricity or other, other things. The, I think the law is clear that the state elections is, uh, conducted at the cost of the state. Only national elections, where if the state, uh, uh, conduct national elections, then the national government should pay the, the state. And I think that is why the municipality of Rul, their elections are conducted by, uh, by the state office and they don't charge the, their rural municipality. I would like to touch on, uh, early voting and electronic voting. Early voting is, uh, is a law right now, is permitted by law for people who are confined to their homes or to the hospital. They cannot go to the polling place. So they can request and cast their ballots earlier. And also those people who travel out of the state. So that is early voting. Right now, the election is, you know, whenever an, an, an election cycle comes around, everybody's aware that there is an, an election going on. The problem is people don't show up. Sometimes they don't want to vote. We cannot go and force them to vote. It is their, you know, it's their right, they want to decide, it's not a mandatory. The, the law in the app is, it's not a mandatory voting. It's still, it's up to the, to the voter to whether to cast his ballot or not. For early voting, I mean, uh, electronic voting, I want to thank, uh, the legislature for getting in touch with one local knowledgeable person. And, uh, we are working together. I have also taken the initiative to look outside, uh, because there may be a question of, you know, this RFP things. Make sure they were following the law properly. So I have contacted, uh, I just went online and started looking around, not knowing what I'm looking for. So I came out, I, I came up with this, uh, I came across this name that sounded, uh, familiar, Smart-o-matic. But I don't know how good they are. I think, uh, twenty, twenty, uh, was that twenty twenty election? There was some, uh, some, some talks going on in the U S. And Dominion, I'm thinking of contacting Dominion also. Smart-o-matic, they are putting together a proposal, um, not to, not the, the, the program itself, but how much it's going to cost. So I'm getting the information ready, ready for such a time that the legislature would need it and then can, can submit it. What they told me is that, um, it is possible to vote online, uh, get rid of paper vote, paper ballots. All you need, all you need is a regular tablet and you can even vote using your own phone. So we take the tablet, go to the polling places, I guess because, uh, they, the, uh, the, uh, the team of experts, we know with the computer and stuff, they, you know, they have to, to help assist the voters to cast their vote. Otherwise, uh, you can vote anywhere you want, you just send them a, some kind of code or whatever it is, and then they can, they can vote online. So that is, uh, some of the things that we are doing because of, you know, we're aware of the desire of some of the members of the legislature. The composition of the board, uh, election board, uh, three, that is something that the, the legislature have to look at and think about hard, how the legislature wants to, to do it. I would not recommend it. I want to go on record that I will not recommend it. For the simple reason that, uh, number one, uh, there is always, people always take sides. And, and I think I mentioned that in my comments. Two people can, can decide, only two people, two persons can, can decide what's going to happen. The, the board, as I, I understand it, is supposed to, to review the, the actions or lack of actions that the commissioner is taking or is not taking. So in, in other words, if the commissioner is doing things that are not in accordance with law, then that board needs to look into that. I think right now, the Office of the Attorney General has that responsibility and they should exercise that responsibility. And anyone, um, senators and, you know, the general public can raise issues that they think, uh, uh, it's not, the election commissioner is taking that it's not proper. I'm not, uh, I'm not saying that people are, are like that, but people, you know, we have the human tendencies and those are the things that, uh, it's good to, to, you know, to consider. Another, another thing about the board, um, right now, the, some of the election officials are called, uh, election board members. And those people represent the commissioner. They make decisions that the commissioner would otherwise make, right there on the spot. To label them as poll workers, I'm not sure if it is fitting to the kind of work that they perform. They, they take a fit of it, of registered voters. And they make decisions. If someone make an appeal, it's, they see something during the, the casting of the ballot at the, the, the ball, the poll, that they think is not in accordance with law, they raise that with the election board member right there. And the election board member is, uh, is authorized to make a decision. If that decision is not in favor of the, of whoever raised the issue, then he can take that to the election commissioner. So the, the members of the existing election board right now, their responsibility is, is great. It's greater than, you know, just being at the polls, passing out ballots and pens, pencils and telling them where to, where to drop, uh, the ballot. So I, if the legislature wants to, wants to have a governing body, maybe they can come up with another, another, uh, label title to, to place on these people, maybe commissioners? Yeah, because in other, in other jurisdictions, jurisdictions like, uh, I think Juk and also the national government, they have commissioners, National Election Commissioner. And Guam, Saitan, Palau. And, uh, and then they can rename the title of, you know, the current election commissioner as a director or some, something. So I, I don't want to take, uh, you know, from the, from the, the, the title of those current election board members. They say, oh, so what are we now? We just, uh, are at the hall to just, you know, hand out ballots? Is that our job now? So I leave it at that. Thank you, Chairman.
Kamwar, Commissioner, Chairman Mafal?
Kamwar, um, the duties of the election board as it stands has not been changed. Those things you said is in the enabling. If they see something at the polling place happening that is not lawful, they can raise, they can and will raise the issue. That has not been changed. It's just the labels haven't changed to where we have a, a board, as we traditionally understand what a board is. That hasn't been changed. Nothing about what they do at the polling place has changed. Now, we just put a, uh, since you're going to be outside of a department and on your own as an office, like the office of the editors, my level in talking with the AG before coming up to craft this was she wasn't comfortable and I wasn't comfortable without a board to look at your budgets and look at what you're doing, instead of you just going straight to the E V R C and, and just bring that complete independence. Is that was the level to where a board felt was, it was felt, uh, necessary to come in and do that part? That, if that makes sense, that's why this is there, but they're not taking anybody else's job away. They don't certify elections, that's still your area. If there is something raised by the public, it can go to them and then you guys can talk about it. But as far as your duties and the duties of the current election board as it stands, that's it.
Kamwar, before I give you the floor, let me, uh, respond to your, uh, comments regarding the election board now, where, uh, in the new, uh, bill, they are being considered as poll worker, uh, which doesn't sit well with the office. You know, I used to be one of the election board, then a tablager and a verifier. So I've been through all of it. I know how, how it works and I see the need for the board, most especially when the state is preparing for an upcoming election and after the election. Because after the election, when the tabulations are being conducted, that's when the chaos comes in. And that's where we need boards to help the office. I remember, uh, previous elections, not the, the, the current one, that other members, candidates are try, they're trying to get in. Yes, I've seen it. And our commissioner at that time was a one man, uh, he's, she's doing things by herself along with her staff. So I see the need of board members to help, uh, our election office. Because the, what we consider as election board are just people manning the, the polling places. They're getting their marching order from the election board. The, the, the commissioner, sorry. So, uh, I, 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 I think we, we really need to, uh, look at the, the process. Because it's not every day we have a lot of, uh, uh, election activity. It's every four years or there's a special election coming up. That's when we're having all of this hectic, uh, a lot of things that needs to be addressed and, uh, worked on. So the need is there, uh, if I'm not mistaken. In regards to your comments on early election, the current enabling legislation, uh, according to your statement, it gives the state that authority to do early election based on certain things. If you're leaving the state before election, you can go in to the election office and cast your vote. If you're in the hospital, you can do that. What we are trying to do here to address the delay is perhaps do an early election, most especially with the neighboring island because of, uh, the movement of ships and the logistic, uh, component. the movement of ships and the logistic component of it. And also to address the delay of those boxes who are coming in from outside of Yap, Saipan, Guam, and the US. We're really trying to get their vote in, but yet they're not contributing to anything. But I'm really, uh, my concern is with the neighboring island. At one point in time, uh, our ship is down. We have an upcoming election. We're engaging with the national government to assist us. And that create a lot of back and forth discussion on how to assist Yap. So if we can have an early election for those areas of Yap that has an issue with transportation, most especially the neighboring island. If you can have their ballot box here before the election, then do, why can't we do that? That's what we are considering in the bill as early election. We know that there are existing, uh, activity that falls under early election, but we're, we're not trying to address, we, we have failed to address the, the logistic component of the equation. Before I understand that some results are being sent in via, uh, radio, then we wait to confirm it with the actual ballot, once the ballot gets here. The reliability of SSB radio, sometimes I know, because I have experienced it during my time as disaster coordinator of the state. It's, so if we can figure out a way to have outside those boxes that we sent out to be, uh, for them to be able to vote early and the state will receive them beforehand and then during election, they will announce the, the result. That's the rationale behind the early voting that we have in the bill.
Thank you. I, the floor is yours. Uh, thank you, Chairman. I'll take your, uh, your concern first and then I go to the other Chairman. There is the, the, the provision of the law that allows you to, to change your, where you vote, your polling place. So those, uh, people that are here from the outer islands, that they're, uh, they vote, let's say, in, uh, Falala purity. If they're here on the island, they can make a request to vote at the special election polling place, uh, election district number two, special, uh, special poll here in town. So that is addressed in the current law. Those who are outside of the state, they can vote early. They can request a ballot, an absentee ballot. And they, in fact, have to vote early in order for their, their, their ballot to count. Because their ballot has to get here before closing time on election day. And right now, the way the, the mail runs, they have to put their, their ballots, if they are in somewhere in the US, they have to put their ballot into the post office at least maybe two, two weeks, three weeks in advance, in order for their ballot to reach Yap before four thirty, before post office closes on election day. So that is addressed in the law. The, the election office right now has, uh, four, I mean, three, three staff. Election Commissioner, the election specialist, reclassified position from election analyst to election specialist, and one election analyst. The acting governor and personnel has approved an additional position in anticipation of, uh, electronic voting. So there is now, uh, I'm not sure what you want to call it, a systems, systems administrator or systems manager to run the, uh, the IT department. I mentioned a smart thematic. They, the guy that I was talking to you, to, to him, told me that we require a team. I said, how many? He said, only one. One, uh, techie to be in the office. And those, uh, election board members who are at the poll, at the polls, they just have to have a basic operation of, you know, tablet, how to navigate. And this thing can be implemented, but electronic voting cannot be implemented without some changes to the, to the current, uh, election law. So that's where, where we are on that. And I'm, uh, I'm happy to hear that, uh, there has been many people who have worked in the election office or done, uh, work related to the, or associated with the, with the election office. So there are a lot of people who are knowledgeable, uh, the way elections are run. They can contribute to the betterment of the, the operation. What I, what I fear is, uh, what we saw in, in the last two elections in the US and what the good Chairman alluded to, what happened to in one of the our sister states. As much as possible, I would plead with the, with the committee to please try to keep those things from happening, because it, it's not going to be good for us. Thank you.
Komwar Commissioner? Any coheres, legal counsel?
Um, thank you, Election Commissioner. Just a question, maybe it would also help in deliberation. Has there been any other jurisdiction in the region that have made use of electronic voting that we can probably look at to see how it's working? Thank you.
Thank you, Elsie. I'm not aware of any. However, four weeks, three, four weeks ago, the National Election Director paid a visit to, to his office here in Yap. And he, he met with me along with the National Election Commissioner, one of the staff. So we, we talked and I was sharing with him some of the things that the state is considering like, uh, electronic voting. And he said that there is one municipality in Pompey that they, all their elections for the municipal government, they're done on electronically. And then the, the program is written by, by a local. So he said that it's, it's possible and he said it has not been any complaints. Other than that municipality here in this region, I, I don't know. But this person that I, uh, from Smartmatic, that I am, am in contact with, he told me that one, one, uh, one of the former, one of the country in the former USSR, they're doing theirs electronically.
Yes, yes, uh?
Yeah. Estonia.
Okay.
Yeah. They said they're doing theirs electronically and says it's, you know, it, anywhere in the country, they, they border, they can, uh, so he said it is possible, it, it's, uh, it's not, so to them, it, it's, it's easy for them to, to write a program. How to implement it, I don't know. That's another, we need the experts in the, in that area. I forgot what the, the Chairman was saying, so I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be silent because I don't want to, unless he rephrases my memory. Thank you, Chairman.
Komwar Commissioner, follow up, Elsie?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. I noted from your comments that you have offered to share what you believe to be adjustments that are needed in order to enable electronic voting. If that can be submitted to the committee for their information. Thank you.
Thank you, Elsie. I, I'm not sure whether I did mention ideas about electronic voting, but other parts of the law, yes. Like, uh, the five days requirement for voter outside of the state to request for an absentee ballot. It just doesn't make sense, it cannot be done. Those, the, those are the areas in the law that I, I, I'm talking about. Electronic voting, I'm not too sure. Maybe I did, but I don't remember. Thank you.
Chairman Mafal?
Komwar, uh, Chairman Babo, and, uh, thank you, Commissioner Keen. Really, uh, this is hope, uh, the intent behind this, uh, this proposed amendment to our current election law is, is to streamline and make elections more efficient and have more participation. That's why the idea of the early voting and even the electronic voting. I'm aware that for a lot of our citizens who are expats abroad, you know, to register is a hardship. Because you may be there working in some service job, but then you have to go to these municipal of government buildings to go find a lottery for something or other. And most people are, that's overwhelming. And they don't end up registering to vote when they become of age. So even the portal that I've asked one of our local tech people to look into making is to enable even registration to happen online so that, with hope, with all the AI stuff in place to, to help with the deep fakes and scams and things. And of course, when they're done with this software, we'll test drive it first. Even if it's certified, we'll test drive it to see if you can scam it, uh, you can vote more than once, you can fake your ID. Or even to see how user friendly it is in the different vernaculars that we have. Because not everybody is English literate. So, but the idea is to, this is a right, but it shouldn't be a chore for people to, to exercise their right to have their voices heard. It shouldn't be a chore to be able to do that, right? As it currently stands for people outside the state, it is a chore. You know, I was, uh, part of the education group for the last, uh, the special election on the political status review. I visited, uh, what, uh, our citizens in Guam, uh, Saipan, and even Palau. And when the results came during that particular, there was no box from Palau. So me and the Director of Education visiting Palau to help with our students who are attending PCC and the YAPs in Palau, that was a vacation for us. Because there were no tabulated votes at all from Palau. So this difficulty, and when I reached out to the election board, they're, why were there no votes from Palau? Oh, we weren't given the budget to, this is a bigger island than Yap. You have to travel from here to here to talk to everybody. And we need help, but the election commissioners said, no, we don't have a budget for you. So to enable some kind of electronic voting and so that our citizens abroad who are concerned with what's happening in our state and want to do their civic duty can do it easily. So it's a right, not a chore. Komwar, Komwar, Mr. Chairman.
Komwar Chairman Mafal, anymore? Go ahead, Vice Speaker.
Komwar Chair, and basically, I have two general comments, one can be broken down into several segments. But, uh, one is the precision that we have, and this is by law. And I don't really have any complaints about that, except that the people call it, call them, I, I agree with, with your, with the bill. But maybe just, this, this is just concerns that perhaps we should take into consideration. You know, the former president, the late Senator from Yap to the FSC Congress, was going to vote in Pompey. But he could not because he didn't file the proper documents. And it's because he didn't know, a lot of people don't know. Maybe this is the fault of, uh, the so-called election boards or the poll workers. But surely, somebody is not doing enough work. And so many people here will come all the way to the poll only to find out that they could not, they could not vote because they didn't file the, the papers the way it should be done. So there's got to be some extent of, uh, education, uh, educationing the pub, the public. The other thing is, and I think we might have alluded to that a little bit, I'm kind of inclined to say that it maybe it's better that on the election day to ban all the electronic. Because a lot of people campaign, you know, while you're over there with your phone rings, then you put down. How do you, you know, can we make it, can you prohibit that on election day? I don't know if this is going to violate anything, constitutional freedom of the, I don't know. Expression, expression of your wishes for your candidate, I don't know. You know, but, but you know, it's different from a, a sign that says vote for my friend. And the other thing is these poll workers, they don't know the difference between 500 meters, 500 feet, 500 inches, 500 miles. So, so they saw the signs and they cannot gauge whether that's viol, that violates, that distance violates, that, that is sense or not. I don't know. I don't know myself, but I'm not a poll worker. If I were a poll worker, I'd work hard on it to know that when I look at it. So maybe there's certain things that we should take into consideration, especially the banning of, preventing people from being able to complain just when you're about to, and then he's staying somewhere working, you know, you just tip your cellphone with you and he's staying outside the boundary and then tells you what to do. Because he's, he's got your phone number, or go to telecom, spread it out on that day. Just bombarding the, the populace, then just, remember me, remember me, remember me, remember me. So, I mean, can we do something about it? What's the penalty says? Maybe increase that penalty by three or four floors. Penalty, Title VII. Penalty, big time.
Komwar Vice Speaker, go ahead, Chairman Mafal.
So in the, looking into the current, uh, uh, election laws, there are some things in place, the five hundred feet for signs and things like this. Even the, the, this measure that, um, I think the two state legislatures ago, one of our colleagues, former colleagues from here started and now people are using of sending a SMS message on the day of voting. But, uh, he did it according to the law, he did it before 7:00 AM. Seventy-seven is the voting window. So no campaigning should be done on the radio or anything like that. All messages that were done before stops on that day. So he's walking up around 6:58, 6:59. But people are still observing those, so there are, those laws are still there. And even the no selling of alcohol during that time, it's all still there. As far as I know, unless there's something, uh, some others, but those are the measures I know we have in place.
Komwar Chairman, regarding that, um, comments made by the Vice Speaker and Chairman, you know, the SMS text messages went out during election or before election. But during election day, existing sign still appears on the roof. But you're prohibiting people from doing texts, but there's still sign, vote for me. So one is contradicting others. So these are the things that we're here to, uh, see how we can improve. Go ahead.
Uh thank you, Chairman. Uh the the current law allows campaigning on election day. Candidates are, cannot uh be in the, in the, where the 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 box is for, you know, for a their time there is limited. And you cannot campaign within 100, I think it's 100 feet from the box. So you you can campaign, but not, you know, within the vicinity of the um electronic, I don't know, it's kinda difficult to. Uh I I wanna, now that I remember, may I go back to the, to the concern raised by Chairman Mafal?
That wasn't your time. She didn't have to worry about it. You weren't commissioned then.
Yeah, no, no, it's not the it the, a lot of the offices have boards and committees that regulate the activities of those offices. Um the election commission office is uh, is not one of those. The Office of the Public Auditor is not one of those offices. And um the Office of the Public Auditor, they they have a very independent nature in their job. Um and I don't know why the election commissioner's office, when it was created, there was no board to regulate the activities. I just wanna leave it at that. Thank you, Chairman.
Come on, Commissioner. Any more? Uh DYCA, you don't have anything? Uh counsel? AG? The floor is yours.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh just something from the legality side of things before um we move on. Number one is to, just for us to just look at the allotment of funds for the elections office. Uh whether that needs to be sort of um put in the bill also, on whether it should be mandatory for funds to be allotted. Uh because with the shifting of times and shifting of people who will sit at this table, that can always be leveraged. Uh I do understand that there was a practice before that allotment was also directed to the Office of DYCA. Uh now that was a practice done. Uh whether it's, whether it's, whether we are sort of crossing any sort of illeg- illegality with how we allot funds to the governor's office outside of that, uh that's hard to say at this point, because we've not interpreted uh the meaning of administering elections that falls under the mandate of the Office of DYCA at this point. Uh the, number two is the whether the some parts of this bill that needs to be reflected in the constitution also. Um and number three is the removal of the election commissioner. Um from what I can see here, that the removal is um at the discretion of the governor upon recommendation from the election board. Um that looks, that seems to be okay, but uh again, going on to ensuring independence is, does, do we need to also have something similar to how um my office, my position is sort of elected into position and also the Office of the Auditor, on how this uh how this flaw also participates into the removal of that position? Thank you.
Well, Chairman Mafal, can you respond to AG?
Uh Kumbar, AG. I can, I'm only thinking about the last one, the one regarding removal uh with uh approval of the governor uh on the, upon recommendation of the board. That is essentially what we have with your office right now. Governor recommends, and if you go along with it, then it happens. So yes, it's just one versus, and the 10 confirms it, but this way it's reverse, it's three or five, and then one confirms it, but the process is still there. It's still there. So that should be addressed by that. That concern there of, it's, the independence is kind of guaranteed by that. They can just remove him. He has to, he or she, the governor, has to confirm it. So just like what we have, the governor cannot just go ahead and remove you, has to come to us. So that is essentially there. If that...
Thank you. Uh Elsie, you have anything? Go ahead, Vice Speaker.
Come on, Chair. And again, I think we're, maybe this could be further amendment to the law. But again, maybe just to keep it in the back of our mind. And we're not there yet, but we are moving toward the direction. There is to equate campaign fund with the freedom of speech. And 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 that is in why some, in some places, they have such a law saying that certain way of funding campaign should not be protected under the freedom of speech. Because sometimes, if we're talking about equality here and fairness, sometimes one rich candidate can buy the votes of the people or some candidate who's being funded by a rich entity, organization, agency, or a person. And then the particular candidate start buying the votes. Um making the, an imbalance in the election process or especially the process of selecting who you, who you really want to, to be the as the public servant, the person to vote for. So maybe sometime, you know, down the road, we, but to say, you know, you, each candidate cannot be entitled to this amount of money, if the amount of money, and he should declare where the the source of the funding, campaign funding. If it's coming from a country that is not our friend or a country that we are in war, I don't know, but you know, it does not come from an adversary to the state. Does not come from an adversary to the state. Then you declare the source of your funding. And it should, and it all depends on the board and the election commissioner through desire, where you're still within the legal limits or not. This is big influence. We're talking about fairness. This is no fair. This is no fair.
Oh, my Vice Speaker, you have a response, yeah?
Uh that sounds like another bill altogether. That's a whole other election bill altogether, not this one. Uh maybe, Vice Speaker, you can come up with something for that one. Let's not track this one. It'll be too unwieldy at this point. Um the only other concern I had is something AG raised earlier, uh the the funding. Uh because as it stands, I know, I know right now, it's only the national election that has somebody go to the high schools to register people who turn 18. I don't think the state election office has that budget. They do? It's not, doesn't seem very active. I don't, I I've only noticed the national elections going to actively outreach to make sure that they register people who are of age or eligible, eligible. And that might be something that the board and these kinds of, if you have a board in place, can make sure, oh, this is year two, we have two more years. Let's go ahead and do these types of things and make sure we prepare ourselves for the elections. But yeah, that that part about the funding, that seems to be a very vital part, is getting people registered, updating our rosters. I think like for my municipality, a lot of people still on the voting call seat for uh the World War box are probably all of island. It just hasn't been updated. Sure. Kumbar, Mr. Chairman.
More? Any more? Go ahead, Elsie.
Chairman, perhaps uh it is fitting that there, that you, you still allow any other written comments that someone may want to submit to your committee for this measure?
Kumbar, legal counsel. Um in the committee, uh like I mentioned earlier, we received one written comment from the commissioner and we're still open to um for the general public to have their opinion in writing and and submit it to 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 the legislators for this committee to review. Uh anymore on, anybody wants to? If there's no other questions or concern, comments, uh this brings us to the conclusion of this afternoon public hearing. Uh the committee wanted to thank all of you for availing your time to be here and go through the the process of uh deliberation and make comments and questions regarding Bill Number 11163. And this public hearing is now closed. Thank you all very much.